Because of your graphic arts department.
Hi, Chambers County District Court comes order on Tuesday, 27th day of July, 2021. Uh, this is a budget workshop meeting that's scheduled for 1:30, it's now 3:03 PM. Uh, to discuss the center of 2022 budget. Oh, look here, we got cookies. Isn't that special? Where's my coffee? Where's my coffee? Thank you.
Well, you know, this isn't a good sign. It's obvious if you've got the money and the time to put all this stuff together, you're underworked and overpaid.
Here's a little secret actually that I have.
Good answer. Alright, so first on the agenda is economic development. Samantha, you're up.
I'm gonna be able to talk. I guess it needs to be on. So you guys, I believe, already saw the majority of that packet. Um, I did add some supplemental information in as well. Cool, so we just figured it'd be easier for you to have it in front of you while we're talking. Um, the first section is basically an introduction to our department, which I thought I'd go through since, um, we're streaming this. So there's some people that may not know what we do. And then the second section that's tabbed is our individual requests, and we'll go through those one by one as well. So, um, you guys know what we do, but, um, like I said, I thought I'd kind of go through some of our individual job descriptions. We have five major areas of responsibility. Those include economic and community development, grant management, graphic arts, special projects, and public information. And we'll talk a little bit more about those in a few minutes, but for now, it's worth noting we have more job responsibilities than we have staff. So, we currently have four full-time employees in our department. You guys know most of them. Eva is our sign shop clerk. She handles 90% of all graphic arts requests, including form design, printing and finishing, sign and banner creation, and more. Robbie is our economic development assistant. She is primarily responsible for economic and community development, like data collection, supportive economic development organizations, and education. She also helps me with project management on several of my grants, and, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about grants in a few minutes. Monica is my office manager. She came onboard from, uh, the extension office in June. She's amazing. We worked together for five years when I was at the extension office. We get along really well. Um, she's done a good job getting our files back in order because, you know, we've moved a couple of times due to Hurricane Harvey. Um, and she's gotten us caught up on some other administrative stuff that we kind of fall behind on. And then, you guys know me, but for the public, my name is Samantha Humphrey. I am the Director of Economic Development and Grant Management, and also the Public Information Officer. So, um, the four of us work really well together, and I'm very grateful for my team. Um, we play a big role in keeping Chambers County running. We're behind the scenes, but so much of what we do is integral to day-to-day operations. Some of our main responsibilities include community development initiatives, serving as a resource for chambers of commerce and other nonprofits and businesses, facilitating and participating in job training activities. We promote eco and traditional tourism throughout the county, manage grants, provide guidance to other departments when they manage their own grants. Uh, we print and cut letterhead envelopes, business cards, and other professional materials. We create signs and banners. We request, I respond to media requests for information regarding not only my department, but the entire county. Um, I draft news releases and, um, also, uh, uh, sorry, lost my place, resolutions for Commissioners Court. And then we have a lot of special projects that kind of get thrown our way. Um, and some of those are planning for events, catering events, submitting requests, requests for clearance to the Texas Historical Commission. Um, I kind of jokingly call this the Department of Odd Jobs.
Speaking of planning for events, you want some of the big training?
You need to.
Disaster training? Look me like that now.
Hey, I'm cooking beef tips, so.
Just the, uh, class coming up.
Next Thursday.
I took that cat, I took that class, um, last year.
No, I was gonna take that, but I'll be gone.
Oh, wow, I think we have nine spaces available, so.
Nine spaces available for the inside of that.
Uh, you did, I saw your name. Um, and you did too. You did not.
I'm, I'm signed.
You unsigned? Okay, well, I'm cooking beef tips, so you're missing out.
That's what made me think that.
Cooking?
Yeah.
Beef tips, rice and gravy, green bean salad, and hummingbird cake for dessert. So, um.
In the packet is four.
We're gonna go to the, the little page that says responding to a pandemic. They're not numbered, sorry, I forgot about.
Oh, that's a big, that's a big, no, no, I hate when.
I know, and I even thought to myself, I have to number these because I know the judge likes them numbered, and I heard Erin get in trouble for it last night. And I didn't learn from Erin's mistake.
If you pull it up on there, it's in the, um, it's on the computer.
Yes. So, um, I think that a really good example of how my department pitches in is COVID. Um, that's when I became PIO for the county, so I was actually active, but my staff played a pretty big support role. Eva and DeeDee cooked for the EOC when we were kind of sequestered away. But they also answered phone calls, and Eva actually translated for the Health Department several times. Um, she probably printed 10,000 case support forms during that as well. I mean, we went through a ton of paper and made literally hundreds of signs related to social distancing and wearing a face covering. Um, when it came down for vaccines, Robbie, Eva, and Monica, even though she was still at the extension office, all helped out at the pod. They worked the phone bank and literally spoke to people around the world. Um, and then we kind of also fill in gaps during disasters. Um, the girls work the phone bank, and then after disasters, they're now tasked with feeding the, like, employees at large, meaning, um, everybody that's out in the field responding to the event. And then we.
How much, how much, how much work do you do with those departments?
Um, I would say right now, because of the pandemic, 15% of our job is related to that.
I thought it was more like about 25.
55% is what it is. No, that's okay. So we also participate in pre-event training exercises, prepare signage documents and other materials. So we do a lot of different things, but you guys know this. Um, but probably the most important function that we have is grant management. And again, we can talk about that this morning during Commissioners Court. So, the county serves as a contracted party or a pass-through entity for a wide variety of grants. So just to put a hard number to it, right now, we have 18,959,665 dollars and 40 cents. 18,959,665 dollars and 40 cents that we're managing.
For the record, Commissioner Tyson.
So, uh, you guys are, you guys are aware of the projects because I'm here talking about it all the time. But we've got some active projects, Handcoming Wastewater Treatment Plant, the Flood Protection Planning Study, the Ramp Grant, and the American Rescue Act. American Rescue Act is about 8.5 million dollars, and it's going to end up being about eight individual projects. And then we've got some projects that we're working on developing. That's the Oak Street Bridge Improvements, which is about 99.9% and sure, I'm 99.9% sure it's going to be funded. So just kind of keep that in your mind. And then we're also working on the City of Anoyas Sidewalk and Pedestrian Bridge Improvement. We finished up two projects in 2020, the Highway 614 Sumerane, and the two Texas Op-Rent Grants for 2020. And then we've got some projects on the horizon. I've talked to Commissioner Gore about this one, but I haven't had a chance to mention it, mention it to the rest of you. FEMA's issued a new program called Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities for Brick. And we're most likely going to ask that we resubmit this middle top project for that. That's a $32 million project, and Brick is designed for those larger-scale projects where the mitigation was not. Um, then I'm working on the Old River Boat Ramp with Commissioner Hammond, and then a walking trailer Gregory Park with Commissioner Gore. And then, like I mentioned this morning, the HMGP. So it's worth noting that my department's total budget for 2021 was 484,120 dollars, and I am requesting an increase to a total of 520,577 dollars and 44 cents. So we bring millions of dollars to the county each year, so we're totally worth it. Okay, so moving on. Um, I know you've got it pulled up on your computers, but I also put just like a spreadsheet of my budget, so you guys kind of have an idea of where we're starting. So I'm going to go through each item individually. If you want to look at your book, they're tabbed one by one. If you want to look at your packet, they're in there too. I did include some additional supplemental information in the book, so when you guys are making decisions, you may want to refer to it. So the first item I'm requesting is a pay raise for myself, which feels very awkward to sit here and ask for. But my current salary is $60,000.
You don't ask.
Right. So my current salary is $60,000, and that was set with the intention that I would only manage, uh, economic development and grants. And, um, when Sarah and I worked together on that, she was going to come back and work part-time, and that obviously didn't work out. And so I am responsible for economic development, grants, uh, graphic design, event planning, and other special projects. Um, you know, like I said, I have a really good team, and we worked really hard, but the county's growing, and so our department is growing. Um, and we're always taking on additional responsibilities. One of those responsibilities I took on was PIO, and I did not get a raise to do that. Um, in the past, PIO was really used for disasters only, but it has become such a big part of my job. And it's probably 25 to 30% of my daily activities. Um, so I did, in the book, include some comparable salaries, um, for some of the different responsibilities that I have throughout the county. And looking at that, my salary is actually lower than just one job responsibility, even in government. It's hot, I'm sweating, maybe I was just nervous.
I thought it was a hot scene.
Y'all, my, my heart is racing right now, I'm like, um, so. I know, but it's very uncomfortable to sit here and be like, talk to all five of your bosses at once. Yeah, be like, give me a raise.
They didn't fix our cushions in these chairs yet.
You didn't put me in charge of it, it would have already been done.
Robbie, I told her to smile. See, you should have brought pillows instead of cookies.
Well, if I know. I'll hand sew a pillow at this point if it'll get me a raise. So anyway, um, so like if you look at the salaries that I gave you for just three of the job roles, you pay somebody 200 grand to do what I do. And then I did include some public sector stuff as well. Obviously, those salaries are a lot more, but I just thought might give you an idea of what my skillset is valued at. And, you know, I don't want to be a turd here, but there aren't a lot of people in this world that can do all of the things that I do in a single package. Uh, like I said, you pay somebody 200 grand to do three of the jobs, three of my five jobs. I mean, I do graphic design, I write news releases, or I do, I edit video, I work with the media. I have really developed really good relationships with the media. I manage our reputation during disasters. I manage grants, literally $19 million worth of grants. I have a working knowledge of statutes pertaining to hot funds, federal purchasing law, and economic development. I plan and cook for events. And I literally even write my own interloper agreements and MOUs, so, um, you know, I love my job. I'm from Chambers County, I've, my family's been here since before the Civil War. I'm all field trash, like the judge said. And I work really hard to do a good job for you guys, and I really just am asking, I don't think I'm asking for too much, but I'd like to be brought to a reasonable salary for the work that I do. So Robbie got onto me because she said when I talk about myself, I get very quiet and me, but now we get to talk about other people, so I'm a little more, uh, outgoing about that.
I never known you.
Now you can relax. Boy, if that was quiet.
Oh, wait, oh, it's gonna get worse. So the next thing I'm asking for is actually no cost to you guys, it's just a reallocation of funds. Um, DeeDee made $53,000 per year, and when I brought Monica in, she didn't get a raise. There's about a $10,000 difference, and I'd like to give that to Eva. Um, Eva only makes $33,000 per year. She's worked at the county for nine years. Um, just for reference, because I think it's worth, it's interesting and also sad. In the state of Texas, a single person needs to make $30,000 to be considered at the cost of living, and we're paying somebody that's worked for us for nine years $3,000 more than that. And she's, Eva's amazing, she works very hard, she does anything we ask her to do. Um, I do think that one of the issues was that her job description had never been updated. Um, I did that last fall, and I actually, in your book, I included the updated job description with the red lines, so you can see the difference. So when I say that she does anything I ask, even if it's not in her job description, keep in mind that pretty much nothing was before I updated it, so, um, I really, like I said, it's not going to cost you anything. I've already got the money for benefits, I've already got the money for the raise and the budget for this year, you just have to move it over. But that's very important to me that we get that done. I think that we need to pay her fairly for what the work that she does, she does very specialized work. She does stuff that I, even I can't do, have the equipment that she has, it's beyond my scope. Um, so I think we need to pay her adequately. Um, so the next two items I have aren't, you know, super big. Um, when you guys were very supportive of me and let me make Robbie full-time, that was amazing. Like I said, it, um, I, you guys are always very supportive, and I really, really appreciate that. Um, to make her full-time, though, we took my extra help line item and moved that over to salary, and I'd like for you guys to add that back. There are a couple of times a year when we all have to be out of the office for those big events, like the Hurricane Conference, the Christmas Party, um, when we go to Chambers County Day. We're not really a forward-facing office, a public-facing office, so it's not a huge deal if we have to close, but it is inconvenient for some departments when they order, ordered things, and they can't go pick it up for that time that we're gone. So I'm just asking for $5,000 if you put back in that line item, and that number is based on what we had previously. And then the next thing I'm asking for is something that Erin and I talked about. Um, right now, when we do any advertising or legal notice fees, we pay for them out of non-departmental. And Erin and I talked, and I think it would be better for record-keeping and auditing purposes if we had our own line item where we can pull those fees out of. Um, I kind of did an estimate on the maximum we would need per year, and I said $5,000. We may not use that all every single year. But one of my goals with our department is to also kind of grow some of the advertising that we do for tourism, uh, county-sponsored events and things like that. And so I'll pay for that out of this line item as well. And so I'm kind of laying the foundation for some things that I want to expand on in the next couple of years too. And so the last thing that I'm asking for is a pay raise for Robbie. And again, I know that I've said her salary, and you guys were so kind to us when you let us do that, but Robbie is indispensable to me. I, um, I rely on her a lot, she took off for a week, and I thought I was going to lose my mind not having her there to help me. Um, she goes above and beyond, is truly my right, and is truly my right-hand man. She may be behind the scenes, but I wouldn't be able to do what I do if it wasn't for her. So I'm not asking for a huge pay bump, it's a two-step raise, um, but she certainly deserves more than that, so I hope you'll consider that. And with that, the very last thing in your book is a snapshot of our, um, budget if you were to give us everything we asked for. Total difference is $36,475.44, because that request I'm asking for for Eva is no cost to you guys. So, um, I think that my budget is, uh, I think that my department's certainly worth that, I mean, remember, $18 million. So, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'll stop annoying you and asking for things.
The advertisements, that's not really a new money, that would just be a transfer where it is.
It would just be for record-keeping.
Yeah, well, it would come out.
I would advise making mine for 5,000 each, that one we have there, because we still use that for other stuff.
But you could take 5,000 out of that non-departmental and put it there.
Yeah, I think it's like 7,000, $7,000 budget, I think, for notices, and that's like for the buddy stuff, I guess, in the paper, and then Rena helps with, uh, with the notices for construction and things like that. I think hers is probably more of the grant stuff, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and it wouldn't be, like I said, we may not use that full $5,000 every single year, but I just tried to estimate the maximum of what I thought it would be so that we would have it. Um, and again, it's really not a big deal for us to ask Rena to help, but I just think it might be a little cleaner for audit and record-keeping if we had our own line item where that money would come right out of.
What do you buy?
Thanks, Sam.
Office supplies and stuff, how do we have your own line item?
We actually have two separate department line items, uh, for supplies. We have one that's general office supplies and one that's print shop, because we spend a lot more on print shop. I'm not sure why it's delineated that way, but it always has been, or it has been since I got there.
What's your total budget? What's your total budget?
My total budget is.
44.
You do 484. When you, when you done all the signage, or, oh, you print finish cards for all of us, that comes out of your budget? Okay, nothing comes back out of them?
No, that's what we budget.
The only thing that I ask for departments to pay for is if they have some sort of high-expense specialty costs, like every once in a while, somebody will want a special sign size that has to be custom-cut. And sign points are really expensive. You know, so you're looking at, you could be looking at $200 apiece. And so if you're looking at a large-scale signing order where I'm never going to use that sign again except for that, then I'll ask that department to go ahead and give me a line item to purchase out of, just because that's something that we would not have budgeted for. Very rare that, that that happens, usually we're able to accommodate them, we have something similar in stock.
So, a 10% of that budget from 091, that'll cover that increase, plus that. 10% of the 484,000.
I thought it was 15.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, 15% of that would definitely cover.
55.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you for everything you do too. You're out of the department.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for the cookie too. If Robbie would have gotten us some coffee.
May I always get in here with the community plan this year?
Oh, goodness.
Thank you, Robbie.
You're welcome. Bye, y'all.
Uh, looking for it. Yeah, no, purchasing now? Human resources? District clerk?
District clerk?
District attorney's here, are you here? I don't even see him there. DA, you're next. Yeah, we want to head to District Court.
Oh, he was going to have to give us cookies.
Sam brought cookies.
You know, Patty was here first or second.
Yes. Are we ready? Yes, Sarah, whenever you're ready here.
Good afternoon, everybody. I, I kind of wanted to preface a couple of things before we really kind of get into the numbers. This is, uh, this is kind of the way that I was hoping the Commissioners Court would look at this. And, and if you look at it this way, it's, it hopefully makes a little bit more sense. Um, if you look at the numbers and the budget of the, uh, County Attorney's Office. Uh, when we started out, there was, uh, and I'm, I'm obviously talking about the previous county attorney because the, the new county attorney has come into the situation. I think she's done a fine job. When Cheryl was the county attorney, there were three employees in the county attorney's office and six employees in the district attorney's office.
So how long ago was that?
That was, that would have been 2000, 2009. 2009 is when the, is when our office officially came into existence and Cheryl became the district attorney. And, uh, for years, that's kind of the, the District Attorney's Office essentially had twice as many employees as the County Attorney's Office. And when Cheryl was the county attorney, she made do with those, with that number of staff, and, and the district attorney kind of made do also. You know, and that's been going on 13 years ago. And if you look at how the numbers have grown during the past years, the previous county attorney, the, the County Attorney's Office grew a lot more rapidly than the District Attorney's Office. And as the County Attorney's Office added staff, added positions, uh, we were adding staff and we were adding positions also, but we were going out, we were getting grants for those things. Um, so we did, we did as much as we could, we did our share for years. Um, trying to, uh, control costs through grants and through other things, and I think when we get to a couple of items, I think you'll, you'll realize we're still doing this, but, um, I, I think it's important to kind of look at overall growth in other departments that are kind of analogous to ours, when you, when you start looking at the, uh, the, the requests that are made by the District Attorney's Office. Um, so the, the first issue is another secretary. We've been, we've been adding attorneys because that's kind of really where the overall need is, but we can't keep adding attorneys and at some point not add staff, not add secretaries. Um, the staff that we have now is pretty overwhelmed. Um, we're, we're basically, we've gone from four attorneys to six attorneys, and we haven't added, added any secretaries, and we need to do that. The, if you talk to, if you listen to the courts and the legislature and everyone else, they'll all tell you that we're three years behind on jury trials and on getting our court dockets caught up. Um, and the legislature's talking about adding more judges to hear more cases, no one's talking about adding more prosecutors. Uh, so basically, the.
That's a no find amendment.
I, I understand that. The, 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 uh, the legislature and the Office of Court Administration and the Supreme Court and everybody else uh, expect us to do twice the work with same amount of people. Um, and that, that basically ties into the first two positions, obviously, which are salary positions, a secretary and an investigator. Um, it, it's investigators are essentially like support staff. You, if you add attorneys, you need to add investigators. We have situations where now both district courts are running full-time dockets, uh, every week. Both courts are getting ready to start trying, uh, several cases a month, and that's basically going to go on, uh, for the foreseeable future. We get into a position where if both district courts are in trial, uh, you know, we'll have Logan who can run our computers and basically take care of evidence and that kind of thing, but we really need to have a full-time investigator for each court to be able to serve witnesses, go find people, go take statements, things that come up in the middle of trials. So that is, I think that is also, uh, something that's necessary. And obviously, that investigator needs to be. Um, something that kind of brings us to our, another situation is, uh, Cheryl wants to get, buy a vehicle for the office, and Cheryl said she'll buy that vehicle out of forfeitures. Um, for the fact of the matter is, we have our secretaries and staff that are constantly going back and forth to court, and when the district clerk's office moves, there's going to be additional transportation there. Uh, our secretaries are constantly basically having to run around town, and they're doing that in their own vehicles. And that's, I know that doesn't add, uh, I know that doesn't seem like a lot, but over the course of a whole year, that adds up. So Cheryl will buy a vehicle for the opposite of forfeitures, but, uh, item five is vehicle maintenance and fuel, uh, for costs for that extra vehicle and obviously for the office vehicles that we already have. Um, Cheryl had put, uh, 2,000 on there, I think that number would probably actually be 2,500 if you add in the fuel and maintenance for the vehicle that Cheryl is going to purchase for the office. Um, item four is really just an increase due to more employees. Um, we have, for the last year and a half, we have done 99% of our training, of our continuing legal education, and those other things, uh, online, it's all been virtual. Um, obviously, we have more employees, training is going to pick up again. A lot of our agencies grandfathered a lot of our training requirements, and allowed those things to be done virtually in 2020 and 2021. In the coming year, we're going to have to catch up with all of that training, all those certifications, that's going to require travel and obviously training costs, and there's going to have to be an increase because we have more employees. Um, and item six is, item six was listed on here as a raise for Mallory Vargas. What we did with Mallory's salary is when Ed Shell is retiring and we're hiring. What we did with Mallory's salary is when Ed Shattle is retiring and we're hiring Lucas Wilson. Essentially what we did is we took Ed's salary and Mallory's salary, added them up together, divided them by two in order basically to give Mallory a raise. So that line six, which is that ten thousand dollars is not necessarily a raise for Mallory Vargas, but we're probably going to need that at some point for some part-time help. Because as we catch up and as we get through, uh, all of these things that have been sitting for a whole entire year, uh, we're going to need help with things like filing and shredding and scanning and those kinds of things. Because it's literally takes up all our entire staff and even the anticipated, hopefully added position, just do those kinds of things. So there are things that we have to do like filing, like scanning, like making copies, um, shredding things that needed to be shredded. Uh, and that's, so that line six, as opposed to being a raise for Mallory, should in fact be, uh, part-time help. So, uh, that's, that's essentially what we've asked for. Um, I know it sounds like a lot, uh, but essentially this is really just kind of the cost of keeping up. Uh, I, I think everyone knows, everyone realizes the kind of increases that we've had in population. Uh, the pressures of COVID and of just, uh, have added facets to the criminal justice system. Um, we had an increase in family violence cases last year with this COVID. We had an increase in theft cases because of COVID. Um, you know, I think that the cabin fever just eventually got to a lot of people. The fact that people, uh, were home, out of work, you know, led to thefts and burglaries and that kind of thing. So if you look at kind of the big picture, uh, hopefully think that everything on our requests are justified. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So, Tim, you might have said this and I might have missed it. Uh, how many attorneys do you have?
Six, six plus Cheryl.
Okay, six plus.
Yes.
Then how many sports staff? I know you got one investigator.
One investigator and-
So I have a total of twelve, so.
So that'd be, let me figure, Amy.
Is Cheryl included in this twelve, Aaron, on, under elected official on these numbers?
I think so. Yeah, so that would give us five.
Six.
Four, four sec, let me see.
Four.
Four secretaries, yes.
Total twelve, one of them.
Yes, yes. Logan is counted under sports staff.
Got you. So county attorney has nine total. They have three, four attorneys. Four, because they got Charles, Ramel, Catelyn, and then. So they have four and five.
So you're telling a little bit about Mallory's raise, Mallory, you also was talking about part-time help, so.
Mall, Mallory, Mallory's raise has already been accounted for. That's already been.
It's already budgeted.
It's already, that was on, I think that was on last, that was on last Commissioners Court. That's already, that's already all been taken care of.
But we didn't approve it, or did?
I believe so.
Didn't approve it?
Yes, no. It was on, that was on last.
No, it wasn't approved.
We didn't, we didn't approve those.
Oh, we tabled it.
Yeah, we tabled it. It's supposed to come back, it didn't come back today. I put a call into Cheryl yesterday.
So it'll need to come back? You put it back on the agenda?
I didn't get a call.
I thought it was all.
I, I called Cheryl yesterday to, uh, discuss it, but she, I haven't heard back yet.
What, what was the issue Commissioners?
Uh, we, there was just something that came up in executive session I wanted to discuss with her.
So y'all can talk about it.
Yeah, be happy to.
Okay.
I don't want to do it.
That's fine.
Ms. Lake had to put her dog down yesterday.
Oh, no. I do that. Actually, I have any questions for her? There anything else?
I think, I hope I explained it.
You did.
I think I, I tried to be as thorough as possible without taking up your precious time because I know you have a lot to do to that.
So you actually said, when it says raise for Mallory, that would be increased part-time?
Yes.
Okay.
That would just be, that would just be a line item.
Okay, so just ten thousand added to part-time help?
Yes.
So you took that twenty thousand, divided half of it to part-time, half of it to Mallory?
Hmm, no.
Uh, part of it was given back to employee raises.
Yes.
Okay, oh, yeah.
People don't want to give back to employee raises, it's plus ten thousand for part-time.
Right.
That was the theory.
The issue, no, the money that was, the money that was budgeted for Mallory was actually already in this year's budget. Because that was an Ed Shattle salary.
Yes, of the guy that, uh, and was at a higher rate, thirty percent of that balance.
Yeah, but he said he brought, he got both the salaries and split them, done like that. And then that's where the twenty thousand.
Matt, no.
When you hired Lucas.
He hears. Am I allowed to say people's salaries in an open meeting?
Yeah, because it's public, yes, it's public, Rick. So we have with Mike.
Ed Shattle was making approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Mallory Vargas is making approximately seventy thousand dollars. That is already in the budget.
For this year.
And if, and if Ed Shattle had worked until the end of the year, Ed Shattle would have made a hundred thousand dollars and Mallory Vargas would have made seventy thousand dollars. Going forward, we took that hundred thousand dollars that Ed was making and that seventy thousand dollars that Mallory was making. And we put them together and we're, and we paid Mallory and
Lucas.
Lucas eighty thousand dollars apiece. Okay, that comes out to a hundred and sixty, okay? But the entire, Ed Shattle's entire salary was not coming out of general funds. Some of it was coming out of forfeitures and other places. There was a small portion, I believe approximately four thousand dollars that was left. Then rather than try and keep whittling down some more, Cheryl just took that money and divided it among the other four attorneys. So it's, I think the other four attorneys, out of money that was already budgeted, got approximately nine or eleven hundred dollars for the year. And Mallory and Lucas both had their salaries set at eighty thousand, which is, I think, what the, the, if Cheryl had found someone comparable with Ed Shattle's experience, the original plan was to bring in someone at Ed Shattle's salary. She could not find someone comparable with Ed Shattle's experience. So as opposed to paying that larger salary to someone who didn't necessarily have the experience to justify it, Cheryl decided to level it all out. Cheryl did the same thing for myself and Kathy Escobal in two thousand nine when she started out, when we both started out together. Um, Cheryl took the existing budget money and added it up, split it down the middle. Consequently, Kathy and Kathy Escobal and I have essentially made the same salary for the last thirteen years because that's really the way Cheryl likes it.
So the ten thousand part-time is in addition to what you already give?
Yes.
Okay, so that is the ten thousand additional. Okay, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Increase to the budget.
Increase to the budget.
The way it was presented right here, it took the raise off of that.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, that's what, that's what.
No, I'll be happy. You good?
Of course. Okay. Right here, right here.
Yes, give me about five minutes, okay?
Go ahead, yeah, we'll, we'll take it right here.
Where do you want to go, Commissioner?
All right, we'll come to order in budget here in the three fifty-four PM. Uh, District Clerk, it's Patty Hinden. Are you on?
The brand on.
Turn green when you're on.
Let me see the red, maybe dead.
I think everybody's batteries are going low.
I'm dragging.
I know, and I appreciate the court accommodating me when I was out of town. I certainly didn't want to miss budgets, so I appreciate it. Okay, I have a little bit of time. Okay, as everyone can see on my budget, I need people. That's, that's what I'm shooting for, are more people. Um, and I'm just gonna, some people have heard this, I know the county judge has, but I'm just going to reiterate a little bit of history when we started talking about, um, getting a county court law. We didn't know if it was going to pass legislation. We didn't know how long it was going to take, when it was going to get set up. So I, you know, I kept telling the court, well, I'm just going to wait. I'm going to wait and see if I need to hire someone. I'm going to wait and see if I need extra personnel. Maybe we can handle it on our own. And two thousand nineteen came and went, and then I thought, okay, two thousand twenty, we're going to do it. Um, we've got to pull the trigger and start training somebody. And then COVID hit and we were told our budgets were frozen. So I didn't ask because we weren't, didn't have budget workshops. And so here we are. Um, currently, we have, obviously, we're handling the three forty-fourth and the two fifty-third. Now we have county court at law. We also have the Attorney General and CPS Court. Uh, Judge Peel is keeping us busy, as you can imagine. Um, we actually, uh, are getting to where we have all three courts going at the same time. Right now I have two civil courtroom clerks and I have two criminal courtroom clerks. I lost my third criminal courtroom clerk to the two fifty-third. He hired her. That was a surprise. I mean, I knew it was, something was coming, but not that anyway. Um, so now I'm down to two criminal clerks. So I really, I've got to beef back up my, my inventory. And so what I'm requesting is I absolutely have got to hire two courtroom clerks. I've got to hire a civil courtroom clerk so that when my others, I have, when my other two are in court, I have someone for the third court. And, uh, I have one person right now that's civil, but she's not a courtroom clerk. She's just at the counter. We've got to have somebody at the counter. So I need a new civil clerk and then I need a clerk that's a combo, civil and criminal. Because we can't have just two criminal clerks. So that's why I'm asking for two new hires and they're courtroom clerks, which the salary's a little bit higher. Um, the, this, the clerk two is not a courtroom clerk. They're an office clerk. And that person we're hiring, um, because we need someone up front. Our passports are going insane. So there'll be, uh, learning, a clerk, reception, passports and passports for just a little quick education, uh, especially in the West Annex clerk where I need a courtroom clerk too. Well, I mean, she's a clerk too, which means they're not going to be a courtroom clerk. They're just a clerk. Passports are, it's not just one person who makes an appointment, says I'm going to come get my passport. It's four. It's a family. So, so, uh, that is a tremendous amount of work and we're getting to the point where it's, it's constant. We always have some, a family coming in, getting their passports. So that will fill that goal for me. And then the West Annex clerk, obviously, we lost, um, Christie Gober. And I knew we would. I mean, we were way past hiring a full-time clerk. We just, with COVID, we just didn't ask. And then Christie resigned. I do have someone that I send over there, but I can't have her over there full-time. I need her here. She's my quality control supervisor. And, uh, we have enough business and enough traffic over there to warrant a full-time person. Uh, and just for the future, as you're planning over there, I know you're shuffling and considering a new building. We do need more space over there because as you know, I think almost, maybe Mark hasn't seen it, we're in a ten by ten room, which I appreciate. I mean, I appreciate that we got any space over there, but you can't get four people, you know, passports in that room. We have to go down to, you know, the, um, conference room or that meeting room where the TV is and hope someone's not in there. So that would be appreciated to, for you to keep us in consideration when.
Yeah.
We're moving things around.
We'll be open space.
Yeah, so that would, that would be great, so we can have that. Um.
So what are y'all doing in, um, Judge Peel's court? Is he, what is he doing?
Civil.
As I was going to say, is he doing civil?
Yeah.
Or pushing that civil off on you?
Every crappy case that the three forty-fourth and the two fifty-third doesn't want to hear.
The county clerk, I get, you take care of all the courts?
District.
I take care of-
The district court cases.
The district court cases.
Okay. And some of the district court cases can be heard in the county court.
They are being trans, they're not being transferred. They're being assigned to Judge Peel in the county court.
The county court law is in between me and district court, so they handle some of both.
But what we agreed on when Heather and I, when we, uh, helped write the bill to create a county court at law, we had long discussions about it with, between her and I, myself and Scott. And the goal was, she didn't want to learn what we do. Uh, and I don't blame her because it's very complicated. Civil is very complicated, especially family matters. And so we agreed, yeah, so we agreed for me to hold any case that originated in district court. I was going to be in charge of and control over, and she was going to keep her misdemeanors and what she does in county court. So we are in Scott's court, um, frequently. And it's divorces, it's civil matters, civil suits, liability, things like that. And he's, the judge, he likes his docket. So, um, we are busy. We are busy with him, which, I mean, it's great. That's our job. Uh, I just need more help doing it. I can't get to where all my clerks are in court and nobody's manning the counter. Nobody's manning our customers. So that's why I'm asking for that. Uh, my increase in part-time help is the same. We just need backup, so I'm asking for that. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, I mean, do you have at least? I know what your answer is going to be, I asked you anyway. At least prioritize or this is it?
This is for us.
This is your bare minimum, I mean, is this, I mean, you know, I'm just saying.
What he's saying is, it looks like we're going to have five percent reduction in budgets.
Judge, you said we have five percent reduction. We're flat on everything, just.
I understand. I understand what you're saying and I understand that that was the case. And last year it was the case that you weren't going to have workshops and you weren't going to do anything.
Because we didn't know what COVID is going to do to.
Right.
Kind of seen the plan.
I just didn't know what you could, could withstand getting by with.
And I, we can talk about that, but you did hire people last year and you did give raises last year, even though you didn't have workshops. So I'm just asking, you know, that this year be my year.
We did give raises last year?
Yes, you did. I have it from the audit report.
I don't remember.
We did, and we did shuffle some people in.
Yeah, you gave twenty-five raises and hired eleven people.
Y'all did?
There y'all have it.
Yeah.
What do you mean us? We didn't have like, did we?
And if I had, I know that. Had I known that, I would have asked for some of this last year, but I didn't. Uh, okay, bottom line, bare minimum.
It was easy.
And I'm just asking, babe.
Well, bare minimum, I absolutely, I'm going to have a hard time doing my job if I can't have at least three of these positions filled. I could get away with three if you don't want to give me four, but I'll ask for the fourth one next year.
I understand.
But three is like, we're not- But three is like, we're not gonna be able to service somebody, somebody's not gonna get serviced.
If you get the three, does that, is one of them, are these three that you're inquiring about, are they going to the courtroom or when I'm going to the west?
They'll all, one'll go to the west side, two will go, they'll be trained for courtroom clerks.
Yeah, it says courtroom clerk.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I would, I would ditch the clerk two for the ANAWAC and postpone it. But I have to have my courtroom clerks, and I need a west side clerk. Otherwise, one of my, either my quality control or courtroom clerk is going to the west side, and that defeats purpose.
I thought clerk two was higher than clerk one.
You would think, but that's not how the praise association.
Clerk one must read the talks.
It must be.
Clerk one is a courtroom clerk. And then actually, in my office, a clerk one, that it's a criminal clerk, is a higher step, because they know everything. If you're promoted to a clerk, a criminal clerk, you can do everything. Uh, and we reserve that for someone who really knows and can multitask, because that's usually what happens in court, especially the two fifty-third is, we get everything. Criminal, family, civil, all at the same time.
You don't have any part-timers that you can send to the west side to do what the, what they do over there?
No, so that's, that's a great question. I'm glad you brought that up. No, because my part-timers right now with jury, which I'm gonna get to, uh, it takes five of us right now to work jury, because we're still in the transition between the old system and the new. I'm hoping when we get to the new system, which I hope is in the next month, we can get it down to where it's just me, Sarah, and one other person. But right now, my part-time person is completely a hundred percent jury, and she probably will be most of the time with Sarah because of the load, which, you know, I'll just, I mean, you know, Commissioner Boer, you sat in on the meetings when we converted to the last jury system. We did that because some clerks who work for elected officials in this county would not learn the new system, period. They would not learn it, and they were ugly to us when we went over and helped them do it. So, not the county clerk's office, they've been great. So when we shopped for a new system, and Erin was in on it, and we had other departments, we, we were, we just decided we've got to get a system to where we run it and we do all the legwork. I mean, they literally had, don't have to do anything except receive the list of jurors or potential jurors and say, call them in, seat them in order, pick your jury, let us know who you chose, let us know how, how many days they serve, and we pay them. I mean, they don't have to do anything.
They're good.
But it's all on us.
So.
I'm had, I mean, we had to do it, 'cause it wasn't gonna, I mean.
I totally agree with you.
So is anybody else had trial so far, besides me?
Yeah, um, Scott had a trial.
Did he?
Two fifty-third had a trial, trying to think, I've been on vacation, yes. And we have our first general impairment on August ninth, and we're pulling two hundred people. We're pulling them in time slots to, for social distancing. Uh, so, and we're gonna serve, we're gonna fill the two fifty-third, the three forty-fourth. I think somebody just canceled, I can't remember if it's county court or CCL. And then we, one JP is, another one canceled, so it's a lot. I mean, we're gonna, but it's great. That's the point, is to do it all at once, so we don't have to be everywhere.
Are we using McLeod Park now for any of the courts? Are we back, are we in our courtroom?
We're using White's Park.
I said White, yeah, White's Park.
Yes, we have to, yes, we have to, um, for the, to choose a jury, because there's not enough space anywhere else.
So we're doing that for the jury selection, but are, are we doing the court in a new building yet?
Peels?
Yeah.
Yes, I have, I had a dirt trial here. Oh, we selected them out there.
Okay.
And they come back the next morning with the trial here.
Okay, and White's Park and then.
So far, with the exception of Judge McDonald, who he said he will be doing his ward hour upstairs, um, everybody's ward iron in White's Park, because you can social distance. You cannot social distance upstairs more than forty-two people, but Judge McDonald said he's gonna do what he wants to do.
People are masking courtroom.
I'm in charge of that, so, uh, yes, we're still using White's Park.
You say order mask?
He does, so, you cannot go in there, in that one.
So we'll see how that goes on the ninth.
And you said you, you lost one, have you replaced that one yet, clerk two? You have not?
No.
Okay, is that one of these or this that's on top?
It's one of these.
Okay, then that will be a new request, and that will be, you'll have budget money for that one, right?
When, I'm sorry.
I thought you said earlier you lost a clerk that you haven't replaced.
I lost a clerk that I haven't replaced when I went, when we converted to Odyssey in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, when I realized I had to have a quality control person.
Okay.
So instead of a clerk, I had hired quality control, and I've never filled that position.
Okay, so the money went to quality control. I, I was thinking you had budget money there.
No, God, no, I spent, uh, I would already hired someone. No, I just felt like we had to, because we're virtually, uh, everything's paperless now, we had to have someone who could go in and double-check what we're doing. So everything's triple-checked, even in electronic. So that's where we are with that. So now I'll talk about me. I do, I have requested an increase, and the reason, there's two reasons I've requested an increase. It's one, we're the jury department now, and I'm physically like the lead, especially on, uh, the conversion and the configuration and the programming of the system. Uh, IT knows nothing about it. They didn't know anything about the last jury. I programmed the last jury, and they don't have time. I mean, Austin has told me over and over again, I can't, I don't have time. So there's that, and then the Tyler, I'm a Tyler administrator. What that means is in two thousand seventeen, when we moved to Odyssey, I became an administ, a system administrator, because me personally, I just, I have to know the why behind, why we do things. And so I learned, when I do something, I do it a hundred fifty percent. So I learned every asset, uh, aspect of the system, and I've programmed the clerks. Tammy Jenkins knows quite a bit, I will give her that. So it's me, Jasmine, my subject matter expert for Tyler, that's what they call them, she knows quite a bit, but not as much as I do. I mean, I, I'm constantly still, you know, we did this in two thousand seventeen, it's twenty-one, and I still have Austin sending emails saying, ask Patty. I don't know, I don't know the clerk side that well, and I don't have time. Ask Patty, ask Patty, ask Patty, ask Patty. Last year, our last legislative session, when we converted all the criminal case files, uh, the case fees, it took four months to program that, and I did it. And I, the auditor, let me, for a little background, two thousand seventeen, every, every department was supposed to have a subject matter expert that they appointed for their department, so they could keep up with how to program and how to configure and how to use their system. Well, everybody's fallen off. Michael knew a little bit, but even in two thousand nineteen, when I did the criminal case, uh, fees, I had to show Michael how to do it, and now Michael's gone. So nobody in the auditor's office knows how to program anything. Nobody in the treasurer's office knows how to program anything. IT knows some, I will give them that about this, but they don't know enough. So I had to do it last session. Now this session, we've got symbol configuration, what is not, which is not only civil and family fees in Odyssey, but it's also e-filing. So it's a lot of work. I don't mind doing it, but I do feel that I should be compensated for it, um, because I'm doing it for everybody. If you guys feel like you don't want to give me this and you want IT to do it, that's fine. I will tell them tomorrow that I'm not taking any more emails, and I'm not configuring civil and family for anybody but me, and they can just figure it out. But it's a bargain to get me for ten thousand dollars than it is to hire someone in IT for how much do they make? I think Austin makes more than I do. So their people probably make forty or fifty, or more than any of my clerks. And you're gonna have to send them for Ty, to Tyler for at least two to three weeks to learn it, because they don't know it as well. And I mean, when they had the last AWS conversion that we just did a few weeks ago, they completely, I was out of the loop, because I was at conferences and out of town, and they completely missed jury, and they screwed it up when they converted it, because they don't know anything about it. So that took a month to fix. So, I'm just saying, I, I think I deserve that, just for that. I mean, it's additional duties, and, uh, I feel that, I feel that I deserve that, so I'm asking for it. And that's, that's, that's all I have, that's the end of my spiel. I know it's a lot of money, but like I said, I've been holding off for several years.
Point nineteen, you showed having ten employees. In point twenty, you showed having nine employees.
Uh, one of them was a part-time scanner, and I ran out of records management money, so I had to let him go. I don't have a lot of records management money, not like the county clerk. I collect a lot of money, I don't.
You have to have one.
Yeah, nine and a, oh, and roll one.
Yeah.
Don't question me.
You're the county attorney.
Oh.
So you got nine, last year and this year. Seven in eighteen, nine in nineteen, nine in twenty twenty.
I did have, I did have a part-timer last year, but I had to let her go.
You're on my highlight.
Actually, I have a part-timer now, but I just hired.
Anybody else?
I got a question, not for that.
Okay.
What, uh, so I was going to budget today. So your district clerk trust registry is like twenty-three million dollars. What's that money for?
That is money that the court orders a plaintiff usually, in a case, to deposit in the registry until a case is settled. And the, um, Mont Belvieu Caverns case, there's sixteen million dollars. Most of it's Mont Belvieu Caverns case, that's not, they thought a year, two years ago, oh, it'll just be a month, and it's gonna sit there, and, and they just keep adding millions and adding and adding and adding to it. So there's a lot of condemnation with, uh, ninety-nine condemnation suits going on, so we hold on to that money. That's not my money, it's not the county's money, it's specifically for those plaintiffs, and I invested the best I can until they say the court tells me to write a check. And then we pull it out and write them a check. Yes, the registry of the court.
What do they do with the interest that's borne off of that?
I, um, well, the court orders usually state, put it in interest-bearing or not, and the plaintiff, whoever's rewarded the money gets the interest. But the county, uh, collects a administrative fee, which is, uh, five percent on interest-bearing. And if there's no interest-bearing account, then it's just up to fifty dollars, it's ten percent up to fifty dollars. So the interest on that sixteen million, yeah, it's significant.
It is. So the county would get five percent of the interest?
Yes.
Not five percent of the amount?
Correct. And if the market crashes, uh, I have an agreement with, uh, ANAWAC National that, uh, they'll, will immediately take action. We're not gonna, I cannot dip into that principle at all for any loss or any administrative fee or anything. So, um, we have an agreement that he'll alert me immediately, and we'll pull it and put it some, you know, just put it in a straight checking account with no interest or whatever if that happens. But we, we watch it pretty much daily. We watch it, make sure that it's protected and safe, but it, it's in the safest time it can be.
But not a lot of interest?
No, I'm, you remember the day when the interest rate was eight and twelve percent? It would've been a goldmine.
Right.
But, uh, no, that's not the case. It's a big number, but it's just a number.
I'm just curious, what, they'll say it in there all the time, I just didn't know what it was.
Yeah, we balanced that when I took office. It took me two years to balance all that, it was a little bit of a mess, but we're balanced to the penny. I, I worked at ANAWAC National before.
Okay.
And a mortgage company before I came here, and I, I was involved with federal audits, so I am like, it has to be two-deep penny. Everything is two-deep penny and double.
There's some same trust accounts in county clerk two, same.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a little bit there, I just.
All right, anything else?
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys, I hope, I'll be happy. Okay, I have a question, though.
Go ahead.
In the email you sent out, it says that, uh, you'll notify us, you know, whether it's a yes or no. Was that, I don't remember getting that before, I just remember, like, eventually the budget's passed and everything's done. Is that new or?
No, it's probably, it's probably something out before it's officially, okay, so you're post-budget.
Okay.
This was, you proposed two thousand twenty-two budget.
Okay, all right, then I, I don't have anything.
All right. Yeah, we take.
Hi, we're coming to order at three says fourth, third, the four thirty-three P M. And the constables are here, and who are we going first? Have some more on you up?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, uh, I know y'all have had a long, drawn-out thing with all, every, all the departments, you know, looks like it's coming to an end for y'all. Uh, in preparing our budget, the six constables, we all had a meeting, and tried to, uh, discuss our top items that we, uh, were salaries and, uh, vehicles. And, uh, in reference to our vehicles, uh, we're all driving two thousand thirteen or fourteen models, and they're all showing signs of wear and tear. Um, a problem that's been occurring is that we're having to send our vehicles outside to repair shops to get these major repairs done, which is costing us a lot more money than what our allocated budgets now, um, which means longer turnaround time, and we're having to use our own vehicles to, uh, to do our job, to serve our papers and everything, till our vehicles come back out of the shop. Um, I'm not saying nothing bad about the sheriff's office shop or anything, I'm not trying to say that at all, okay? Because, but, 'cause they have so many vehicles now. I mean, the sheriff's office has so many vehicles now that we're basically second to them. I mean, they're, they're important, I mean, they, they have a very, very important to get those patrol vehicles on the streets as much as possible, you know, stay on the streets as possible. Um, I mean, back in the old days, we could show up anytime, or a constable could show up anytime to, uh, get an oil change or get their vehicles worked on. Now we're having to set three or four-week appointments and stuff like that. Um, um, we know that asking for six cars is very unreasonable, so we came up with a plan to ask for two and, uh, and give them to the most, uh, constable, the most who's got the oldest cars and everything. And then, uh, then each year, ask for two more cars until we all have a, uh, a newer vehicle. You know, in the past, I know that the, we've gotten the vehicles from the sheriff's office and things, but they're growing so much that they're having to keep their vehicles longer than they, they anticipated now. And so that's just kind of, is, uh, you know, not letting us get an upgraded vehicle and everything, so our vehicles are getting older too, and having caused more problems. So. And, um, we, we've discussed about, uh, budgets, uh, and our budgets and everything for, uh, salaries. And um, we, we've discussed about uh budgets, uh and our budgets and everything for uh salaries for the constables and stuff and uh. You know, uh, I, I wrote on my paperwork to y'all at the very beginning that the uh, you know, I, I did a kind of price uh salary survey and uh. A sixteen-year deputy with the sheriff's office made between eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollars. And uh, that's not included certificate stipends according to the twenty-twenty-one budget. Um, all, all the constables that you have uh have sixteen to thirty-plus years of law enforcement. And uh, I know the perception that. That the constable's office is a part-time job, but however, with the rapid growth beginning to warrant more law enforcement presence in every precinct throughout the county. And um, kind of looking at what our papers have we've served so far in twenty-twenty-one, it looks like we're, we're on track to surpass twenty-nineteens. Um, papers served and stuff. Twenty-twenty, because of the COVID, there was, I mean, there was very little paper served. Uh, I know these salaries increases appear to be unreasonable, but we're open to sit down with all y'all, you know, at a later date. Um, because I know what, what, what we'd like to have is our salary to be set at what the uh JPs make. Uh, there's a lot of counties we, we looked into, a lot of the counties, the JP and the uh constable make the same amount. And uh, that's what we like to have, but you're looking between eleven and twelve thousand dollar difference in their salary dollars. Um, maybe set up a three-year plan or something where to get the salaries up to where, say where the JP will be making, you know? Uh, because I mean, I know the percentage can be like fifteen to seventeen percent higher and I know that that's very unreasonable. Um. Uh, also, um, because I mean, the bottom line is, I feel like the, we feel like the constable's salary should be comparable to just the piece. Sheriff's Office Supervisor or even a court bailiff, because our court bailiffs are making pretty good salaries too now. Um. Uh, I've asked for an increase for uh my chief clerk, uh, a one-step raise, because when she was hired on, uh. Couldn't to uh give her the salary that I wanted to, so agreed to uh come down one step and do the. The work that she's done, she progressed. I felt like the, the one step would get her closer to what she was making before. I did turn in that five-year uh salary survey. Um, personally on my budget, in reference to the budget items, items, um, I'm asking them to stay in twenty-twenty-two. Um, except uh, there's a reduction um to let y'all have on insurance and bonds. It's a eighteen sixty and reduce it to five hundred dollars on that, because uh I've talked with Aaron about this and there's not a whole lot. I, I don't know why I had eighteen hundred dollars before, where it wasn't spent in years past. Also, in the account maintenance for a fuel and maintenance for vehicles, I had a ten thousand dollar budget last year or this year. And uh. Reduce it down to five thousand dollars. That's all I have.
Got any questions, John? Okay, no. You come at the end of the day, you don't give me any questions. Yeah, I started.
Really?
I've just got a couple of different things here. Uh, the, the reason I need to come up here, I need the office, office supplies increased because Missy's now. Taken over my office and uh she's doing the work for, for the constables. Of course, the other one is doing for two. So I need that increased. I need uh twenty-five hundred for supplies, other, three other, the, the constables got the twenty-five hundred last year. And I didn't get it. I, we were under the impression that all of us would get it. That was for the cameras and the uh vest or whatever else we needed there. But I, I still hadn't got it. Both of them got them. And contractual other, that's five hundred increase. Because now I've got a post office box, Tlet, and JPC eight is gonna come out of that. And that's only five hundred. An increase of four hundred dollars for travel and training. And that's for Missy too, because she's gonna have to take some of these civil process rules. And other than that, I'm just curious about how come we can't get a printer for that office? I was under the impression it was, I've got the money in the budget, I just can't get it approved. And I know it has nothing to do with this, but we still need a printer.
So who's telling you can't have it?
Huh?
Eric. Because it's not supported by IT or?
Did Parches in or?
No, you said Derek.
I'm talking Derek.
So what, what's he saying about it?
They're saying that they want to go back to using one printer in the office. Now, my question was, is everybody gonna do it as a. District, I mean, the county clerk's office gonna turn theirs in, the JP's office gonna turn theirs in, is the tax office gonna turn theirs in? It's like it's, we're the only ones that's not getting it.
Because of the, the maintenance on all these small printers. Seems like I've heard some of that.
And mine's on the, I've got a small one in there, but it's a hand-me-down from uh the judge's office thirteen years ago and it's on the brink. And we've tried that punching the code in down the office and that's, that was, that didn't last no time.
Where's that printer?
It's down the halls and on the other side of the sheriff's office. And like today, they've had some people in there and couldn't go through there. And the judge's office, you couldn't, we, he was gone from a lot of the day-to-day, so. Right, I mean, a lot of viruses, especially on juveniles, can't let nobody else see it.
Who's the laser over the IT part?
So they're in the process of redoing the printer contract for the county. That's probably where some of that's got hung up back. So I'm not saying it's a good excuse, but you're saying that's probably some of the excuse. Because they're, they're trying to renew the printer contract and get copy printers in the building. So, but they are gonna go to some kind of security system on it, so.
To where you punch a number and have to walk down the hall to get it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know one thing you talked about is getting like an ID badge.
Yeah.
For you to badge, you print something to a printer, it, it holds it in the printer, you walk up to it, scan your badge.
And it prints out your.
And you print your.
Is everybody gonna have that?
That's what they're trying to go for.
Do I? So the tax office is gonna take theirs out?
That's what I know.
Clerk's office can take theirs out, JP's office can take theirs out?
That's what I know.
Or is it just the const?
Nobody's picking on you.
Now the sheriff's office has it, but of course they're right there at it.
So you're saying you got one printer for the whole building?
No, everybody's got one except the constable's office. And the sheriff's office, of course, sheriff's office has got one right beside it. And theirs is hooked up to their computer. Of course, ours is too.
Well, in the one case, I have to make at least.
Yeah, she can explain it more why she needs it in the, in the office.
At least for each case, I have to make at least three to four trips to the printer. And we've got a situation right now in our JP's office. There, I don't know how much I can say, but I almost couldn't use theirs for the next two weeks. Because of certain situations and yesterday and today, they've had victims in the sheriff's office. And their door's been shut and I had, I wouldn't have been able to get to that printer either.
Other than going around?
Other than going all the way around to the main office.
Think about the steps you did, Amber.
Well, right now I don't need those steps. Right now it's becoming very difficult.
It's interesting.
So maybe you do a formal request email. Are you the laser?
No.
Thank you. Can discuss it. You can talk to me with it if you want to. I'll sit out with that to you.
Well, I thought we had all that settled out in that meeting we had about the e-filing, because that's coming down the pike and they just been to school and they'll tell you it's, it's coming down the pike. I was just one of the first ones went to the school and they hadn't had it ironed out, but it's coming.
So is that why we budgeted that?
I'm sorry.
Is that why we budgeted start with from, because of e-filing?
Well, I was under the impression we'd find the money. You said we'll find the money for it because it's coming down. But then I took, we took money out of John's and stuck it in mine so we could get one, because Missy's gotta have it for the four constables. But now we're kind of been put on the back burner because of this printer situation. So. That's all we got.
Okay.
Y'all bear with me. This is the first time I've ever had to do stuff like this. Uh.
You're, you're a natural.
Uh, well, the one thing I'd like to talk about is vehicles. Uh, you know, I drive a twenty-fourteen truck. It looks good on the inside, looks good on the outside. Mechanically, it is worn out. Uh, it was a gift from the sheriff's office and. We asked for forty grand. I asked for forty grand for it. And I'm pretty.
You're both both asked. Y'all have two oldest?
Yes.
How many miles does it count?
Mine has a hundred and sixty-four thousand.
What's yours?
But like my vehicle, uh, we spent, the county has spent fifty-four hundred dollars on it this year and it still doesn't run. And you spend that much money on a ten thousand dollar vehicle, you don't have a fifteen thousand dollar vehicle. We used to have a ten thousand dollar vehicle. So the more money we keep putting in, it's just not. I try to be a good steward of it. And uh, I am not opposed to buying a used vehicle, you know, one that, like the sheriff's office has bought in the past. Wayland has one that they demo vehicle, that they buy for cheap, or they had one on the lot just for a while, buy for cheap. I'm not opposed to doing that. I would just like to have a better vehicle that I'm not broken down on the side of the road. Uh, the first couple of months taking over, I was on the side of the road about two or three times a week, broken down on the vehicle. I didn't get out. I stayed in the truck, you know, let people pass till it finally would crank and I'd get to run and go back, so. But we ended up spending that much money on it and it runs good. It just sputters and spits at about fifty-five miles an hour. Uh, it needs the front end on it, which is wearing the tires out and the tires are not cheap. It's just, it's putting good money into bank. And I think a new vehicle will last us at least eight years. Uh. Doing, doing the math, it just seems like to me, buying a vehicle at the lower price that they are now than what they're gonna be in three or four, five years or whatever. I think that it'd be a good investment to buy one sooner than later. By the time one is ordered or one is found or whatever, my vehicle's likely to have close to two hundred thousand miles on it. And I'm not hard on a vehicle. I'm pretty good at it. I drove the same vehicle to sheriff's office for eight years. So I'm pretty good at it. Now, uh, the next thing with us talking about, I wanted to get a printer, fax machine and stuff from my office too. The main reason why I want it, I need one of those, uh, I need a scanner to scan paper documents in my systems. I don't have one in there now. Uh, Robert has a hand-me-down one that was given to me that it doesn't work at, I can get it turned on most of the time. But I really don't need a printer. I don't need all that stuff. I just need a scanner. And I figured the cheapest way to get out of it was buy one of those, like what's in your office. So buy one of those. It's cheaper than buying the scanner, you know, the little box scanners on everyone's there. So, uh, another increase is uh. There's travel training. Next year, I'd like to go to more schools to really learn what the hell, what the heck I'm doing. Sorry. What I'm doing. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that I need to uh, to get a better grasp of and the classes would help that. The ones that I've gone to so far, I honestly think it's total waste of taxpayer money, but it was mandatory that we had to go to. And uh, I would also like to get my uh, my instructor certificate. That way I can help out the county if needed to instruct in a class. If the sheriff's office doesn't have some, an instructor to teach a class, like, lean on me. So, and same with our, all of our constables. Other than that, oh.
You set up forty thousand.
Right. Yeah, the, it's up to forty thousand. It, it could be way less than that. And like I said, buying a demo vehicle or a used vehicle at a cost, it doesn't even have to be a police package vehicle. I'm not into pursuits. I'm not into all that anymore. Uh, just, we can find a vehicle that would meet the needs and save the taxpayers money at the same time. So, I mean, I, I really do try to be a good steward of, of taxpayer money. I spent thousands of my own dollars so far, you know, getting everything ready like I like it. I'm kind of OCD on things. But, and oh, the money I asked for increase on vehicle maintenance, fuel, of course, that'll go down if a, a new vehicle is approved. If not, then I'm sure it'll eat up all that. No questions?
Questions? Now, I will have to say that uh, he's been pretty diligent about trying to keep his vehicle working and a lot of that maintenance he did on it himself, so. Saves the cost.
The truck? Yes. That's a, that's about the best option we can go with. Uh, they're universal. You know, you can use them as a, have people in it and haul stuff. SUVs are a lot more expensive and cars, I'm six-three and close to three hundred pounds, I can't get a car.
This is the one we're looking at, Chevrolet, brand new, for thirty-five.
I'll need this copy here.
My fault. I tried in my.
That's just one of the vehicles. That's one of the cheaper vehicles we found. Yes.
They had no Ford?
The Fords are about ten to twelve thousand more.
Really?
Yes.
It could work.
There are reasons for that.
Well, yeah, but.
Yeah, because we're idiots in a van.
Still trying to save money, you know, we're not trying to be, uh, not trying to be, you know, greedy or trying to get something new. It's flashy, just leave it, a better vehicle.
Yeah, I think Sheriff said he was going away from the Fords. He's actually looking at the Dodgers.
I've never owned a Chevrolet or Dodge. I've always owned Fords or.
Well, don't, don't go to the dark side now. Yeah.
Hey, I'm just there. We look at it. They're civil.
Next victim.
I don't have much to add, uh, just to kind of reiterate what John was talking about, our salary increase. Uh, I have asked for an additional twenty-five hundred dollars in the vehicle maintenance, fuel and gas. It's just skyrocketing, rocketing. And I've also asked for an additional eight hundred and fifty dollars for office supplies because we're gonna try to buy. Probably by gun sake, because they told us that. We, we go into houses when we do evictions, if we find abandoned property in there, guns, whatever, that we've got to take them with us and secure them. Keep them in the fort. I've got a spot for it now. I drive a Dodge. And it has a hundred and twenty-eight thousand miles on it. I plan on keeping it a bit longer because unless something drastic happens. Y'all gave me, uh, y'all helped me out with the lights, all that stuff, emergency equipment.
And I appreciate it.
So where do y'all keep conference caterers equipment at now? Or items or whatever?
Cabinet in mine that's got a little loft.
Just in your office?
In my office, yes. They have to say to JP's office.
We don't have a. Any questions?
Tell us anything.
Really got nothing to add, other than that I would really urge y'all to try and get on this schedule, trying to replace a couple of vehicles every year. This guy is a dog, this is a dog, this is a dog, rising good shape. I got sixty-four thousand on mine. I can ride it for the next three years, five months or one week that I got left.
And we appreciate you.
But it would really be nice if these guys could start getting updated.
Okay, thank you. All right, if I got any questions? All right, thank you guys. Thank you, girl.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hey, we're gonna get away from here in five. No overtime now.
All right, what's our, what's our schedule on posted G, electric officials Saturday? We done?
Well, no, of course, too. Yeah, well, yeah, we're through with the, or fix me through, period.
I, if I'm correct, I'm gonna act.
It's gotta go in court. No, I think the court sets the salary, then they go into paper. And then we, we, we set proposed salaries, remember that? It's gotta go, I think it goes in court first. And then comes back to court for approval. Cause you gotta notify the public to do this. I think it is, but I think you prove it first, then you gotta have the ten-day notice before you, or you, your approval, proposed salary, so like. And then you come back and approve it.
You do that to give them time to breathe if they're gonna breathe?
No, yeah, no, that's not till after you approve it. So the second time comes court. Then they have five days to read. So, I mean, we may all look at what they're talking about, a three-year plan or something on it.
A three-year strip plan?
Increases.
Increase or seven? Two-year.
I mean, did, do we need to go into executive session and discuss any more salaries? We're good right here.
Yeah, that's.
No.
Let, let's do it real quick.
Yeah, let's do it. Okay, so we're gonna adjourn, uh, recess from regular session, just commence this quarter, four fifty P M. Budget works out and go into executive session, personnel. Record, we made overtime today? All right, Court Come to Order after executive session, five thirteen P M. Go back to the regular session, uh, workshop, budget workshop meeting, and nothing further to come for the court, we are adjourned at five thirteen P M.